All right, it being the hour of seven, we're going to start the Thursday, July 21st, 2016 Holbrook School Committee meeting. I'd ask you all to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens with a concern? I don't see any, so we'll now turn to the report of the superintendent, Dr. Lally.
Thank you. I have one thing I'd just like to say before I start on my report, and then I would like to introduce Jorge Gonzalez Kiano, he's our new technology director.
Great.
I want to make sure that everybody knows him.
Good to see you, Jorge.
Nice to meet you.
Got a chance to meet. We welcome you here. Come over here, we will introduce you.
Yeah.
Formally introduce you. On behalf of the Holbrook School Committee, welcome, Jorge.
Thank you so much.
Look forward to your expertise and the health of the schoolchildren.
Thank you.
I had a chance to meet your wonderful son, Diego.
Exactly, yes.
Good boy, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Lally.
Jorge's been very busy already. He's been doing Google Docs.
Good, well, we have a lot of questions for him, so we're going to get to that a little later.
He wants to be right on the spot.
Great, okay. So, please continue, Dr. Lally.
My building update. Last night we had a building, current school building committee meeting, and today we had the office meeting in the morning. So, there are a lot of great things happening. Right now, they've just finished with the irrigation and seeding of the baseball field. That was the first one. They're doing the softball field in August. They also have been testing, if you see the mock-up out there by the trailer, they've been testing, doing the window testing. It's completed now, and the windows are in good shape, so they just are, you know, doing all the testing here for us before they put the new building in. They are also, they've roughed out some of the MEP building A's, so the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, so they're, you can see that taking shape, and I think they're going to be willing to do a tour or assume.
I'm good.
They're doing one for the building committee on August 17th at six. So, I think they'll probably do one for the school committee, or you can join in with that.
When is that?
That's August 17th at six o'clock.
What day is that?
Wednesday.
Okay.
And so, you should meet right over here by the trailers and give us a tour, because they've pretty much almost sealed up the building from the outside, so we'll be able to see what's been taking shape inside. You know, some of the wallboards have been put up too, so it's going to be pretty exciting to see. In August, they have an obvious what they had, they said that they were finishing, they've completed the roofs on A and C, the first ring and the end ring, and they're just finishing the roof on B. They actually finished in August. They're completing wallboard on the second floor of the A building, which is the end peak, the end one closest to the trailers. They're completing the first door wall frame, metal wall frame, in the C building, which is the end. They're completing the second floor MEP in the wall in the C building, and they are irrigating the implanting at the softball field in August. In September, they're going to have permanent power to the whole building.
Wow.
So, and then July 8th, we had the kickoff of the FFE part of the project, so we were looking at furniture, and we're going to be visiting some showrooms in August.
FFE stands for what?
Furniture, fixtures, and equipment.
Okay.
So, out of that budget will come furniture, but it will also come, will be some of the equipment. So, for example, I know Mike is really excited about getting some new equipment in his area, so that will be coming out of that budget too. So, we have a lot of things that have to come out of FFE, but the, you know, the furniture showrooms, we're going to go into one in Boston and one in Connecticut, and, you know, looking at samples. And then in September to October, we should be bringing back some samples here that will be available in schools so that teachers can take a look at them, try them out, sit in the chairs, see what they like, and then, and students can sit in some of the chairs, look at the, you know, we're going to have a cafeteria table, or not just one, we'll have different samples, so that people can kind of, you know, see what they like about each type.
So, when you say one in Boston and one in Connecticut, what are you talking about?
There's a big showroom in Connecticut that is like a huge, I think the last name is Ward Show, and it's in Manchester, Connecticut, and it's, so it's just a huge building, like a warehouse full of different types of furniture, high-end, all the way, you know, down to, you know, there's desks and everything too, but there's all different grades of furniture, and there's different types. So, we'll be able to see elementary tables, that type of thing, different chairs, and, you know, so we'll be looking for all the different levels, so we'll be different sizes and shapes and, you know, different types.
Can you see them online from other vendors as well, or is it just limited to the Boston Connecticut?
Well, they have a, no, I think they have a collection of different types of different manufacturers.
I see.
And you can see them online, but it's-
So, it's a smorgasbord of-
It is, yeah. And you trying them out is really one of the best things, because I know who, sometimes when you look at them and you think that's going to be great, but when you sit in it, it's pretty uncomfortable, or it doesn't adjust and it doesn't hit kids right. So, I know when I was doing that before, students tried out the desks and tried out the chairs, because they, some of them look great, but they just weren't comfortable. And we've also looked so far, when we were doing the technology visits with teachers, we looked at furniture at each of the schools we went to, and I know there was a favorite chair in West Bridgewater that kind of rocked.
Yeah.
So, that's, you know, that's something where people are looking at. It's not a real rocking chair that you sit on.
It's just, yeah, I saw that chair.
It's just a little, usually that, you know, so that people who are, you know, to all kind of sit around chairs and whittle them here and there, and this is made to, you know, do that without breaking, and it's, you know, how kids always move back on chairs.
Yep.
This is a, you know, a safer way of having kids get that energy out. And I think a lot of the teachers like it too, they would be comfortable with something like that.
So, who's in the group that's looking at them initially? Is it a group of-
Well, what we're going to do is have the principals and some administrators go along with a couple of members of the building committee who volunteered, and the representatives from Flansburg, and the, Tavarez is the consultant that's on that. So, we're going to go look and initially screen.
Yep.
Because we have Mallory, who was in the classroom not too long ago, and Stephanie was in the classroom not too long ago, so they have a good feel-
Yep.
-for what they'll need in that level, and Mary Ann will be coming, so I think they're going to do the screening of the materials. Then, those are the samples that we'll bring back, so it'll be an array of samples that we try out in different schools, so that teachers can refine that, those choices from what's brought back. Because it's too overwhelming, I think, with all of, you know, especially these showrooms, that one in Connecticut is supposed to be, you can spend hours and hours.
Okay.
We could spend three hours there, but you can spend more. So, I think it's, you know, that's kind of holding it down a little, and then having samples that, you know, people can try out.
Is there anything else on the building update?
And today we had the first keying meeting, which is, doesn't sound that exciting, but there's a whole plan and hierarchy for the different keying. So, keying classrooms, keying outside doors, all of that, and the master and the grandmaster keys. So, we went through that preliminary meeting today, and we'll have another one on August 8th. And that day, we're also going to have a technology meeting with the consultant and, you know, because Jorge hasn't met them yet, and we're going to just go over some things. We also had that technology committee. So, as far as the devices though, we will be talking about the devices with the committee members in September or August when we get back. And then that will be another discussion. So, this is more of the network, the infrastructure, and, you know, some talk about how that will translate into devices, but the tech committee is really going to be talking about the devices themselves, because they're more specialized to the different levels. And there were three people who volunteered from the permanent school building committee to be on that committee too, so that should be-
Can you, were you one of them? I wasn't out, was, did it all happen last night?
They did last night, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't expect a lesson.
I'm sure they might, I should post on that.
Yeah, it's just, had been in the classroom, you know, in the classroom.
Yeah, so I think that would be, that would be great.
Now, you have personnel.
Can I just ask one follow-up question?
Yes, please.
So, regarding the building, is it still ahead of schedule, the construction and under budget?
Yeah, under budget.
Terrific.
Still going just great.
Do you know about how much under budget?
I don't know. We did have some pages-
Or ahead of schedule, are we still two months, or?
Um, I don't know if they didn't qualify it that way, but it really was amazing that they're already working on the interior at this point, and they're going to, they're going to have, because it'll be all weather tight.
Right.
It'll be, it'll just go through that building, you know, during the-
Well, the amount that we're getting, I think, was reduced by about $2 million, so that's significant.
That's great.
Significant.
It sure is.
Yeah.
And hopefully we keep continuing on to track.
We signed an amendment to that, so it's interesting.
And now for the personnel. We have some new hires. We're still in the process of, you know, posting and people are interviewing, but these are the ones that have been already signed for next year. So, we have two special ed teachers, one severe, special ed teacher for the junior senior high school, and a special education teacher for the south school, and those two have already been hired. We had two resignations since we last spoke, Mary Mingles, who's a science teacher of physics, and Jennifer Turkowitz, who was a special ed teacher. So, those two, they're in the process of hiring replacements of them. And Jennifer Welch, who was a special education teacher at the junior senior high school, is now going to fill an English position that was open, which she certified for that.
So, on the first two hires, are those new positions, or are those replacing people?
The first one is, there's a new life skills program for the junior high school students, and that's the severe special ed teacher. And the second one is a replacement.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm assuming there'll be more next meeting?
Yes.
Is there anything else that would like to be discussed about the personnel issues? All right, would you like to, and that's your report, isn't it?
That is it, thank you.
Now, I'm going to just keep the report open for one minute to just ask about the dashboarding issues, because we had these financial and academic dashboards that we were hoping would come on board, and now we have Jorge here, so I'm hoping that that will work out at some point, that you'll be working that out, and we'll come back to us soon.
Absolutely. I understand Jorge has dashboarding experience.
Good.
So, they're already so-
That's great.
Yes.
That's an important issue for the board, Jorge, so we appreciate that. I know you're going to work with Trish on the business, and I'm sure with the academic component on that, we look forward to seeing those.
I look like you were just going to say some comments.
Yeah.
Would you like to say something about that, or?
Yeah.
You're working on it?
Yeah.
Good.
I'm working on the logistics, I'm working on the c and graphic, and what I'm working on.
Great.
That's what I'm working on, so I'm managing the budgets too as well. I think we can afford to have the presentation for the board.
Great. I know it'll help the committee, you know, on some of our issues, so we look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, let's now turn to, unless there's something else, Dr. Lally? We'll turn to, fine, we'll turn to Trish Lugo, our school business administrator.
Okay, so, in your packet, you should have the FY16 budget reports, and I give them to you in two parts, and one is the payroll portion and one is the operational portion. We see the payroll portion has an available budget of $58,000, and the operational budget has a deficit of $425,000, which we expected, because we have to transfer certain expenses to the certifier account, making them off of our budget. So, I'm working now with Beth, the town accountant, to make sure that all our accounts are reconciled between the town and the school, which is all two different accounting systems, and once that's completed, probably a week or so, we should be able to have the bottom line where our deficits are in the budget, and then we will make the transfer of special ed tuitions into the certifier.
Did she give you any indication when they hope to have the soft write system at the town?
They are going to work on it during the course of the year. We had the kickoff meeting with soft write about a week or two ago, and they're hoping to go live next July 1st, but in the meantime, we need to create a new chart of accounts that will fit in the school's account numbers with the town's account numbers, because some of the numbers that we use are required by the Department of Ed and the Department of Revenue, certain codes mean certain things, so we have to make sure that the town's account codes and our account codes meet the functions of the Department of Ed and the Department of Revenue and the Council. So, that's the first thing that has to happen, is create a town-wide account.
Right. If you could keep a watch for lie too on the capital improvement committee, because obviously the schools have an interest in that as well, and want to make sure that that is factored into the software, so people can track what projects are going on and what projects there are in the future, and we can, you know, have a larger picture of that. I think that would be very helpful, you know? And then maybe we could even dashboard some of those items, you know, at some point, so that the public as a whole gets a larger transparent idea where, how you're getting a big bang for your buck here.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Great, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please, go ahead.
So, every day we're finalizing any encumbrances that are still out there, or maybe the last few bills to come in, so really at the point where we're finalizing the FY16 budgets and the grants and the grants and such.
When do the bills have to be in by?
Actually, we've got most of them in. Our encumbrance list is down to $33,000, which is pretty small, and because we can carry those encumbrances over into FY17, we really have a whole year to pay them.
We do.
So, any, yes, so any bill has until July 30th of 2017 to come in and get paid. If it doesn't, then the town takes that money back, and then if the bill comes in after the fact, we have to go to town, get any of the special ed payout, which you've probably seen on the years, a couple times that happens.
Are there any questions for Trish on this?
Just regards to the year-end report, can you remind me when that is due again?
It's due September 30th.
September 30th.
I have to go to, the Department of Ed has a number of meetings throughout the state over the course of the summer, and that's where they give each district their paperwork and the documentation that we need to fill up. So, I am going to the Plymouth workshop on July 29th, and that's when I'll receive the packet, the information for Holbrook. And so, for the, really I gear up in the month of August and start gathering all that data, because by then the budget's closed. That's why I take July to close up the budget and grants and such, and then August I'll start working on the information for that end of the report, which is September 30th.
That's very good. And also, you had, as the committee remembers, we had the auditors, and I hope next year we'll have the reports in hand a lot earlier as they come in.
Absolutely.
But, they obviously had some issues, and we thought this would be a perfect meeting to try to follow up on some of those issues.
Sure.
And I appreciate you for including that in your update.
Sure.
Would you please discuss that?
Sure. Well, I did make the copies of the three reports that I do get.
Okay.
The reports, the report that I don't get is the town-wide report, about 50 pages long, and that's a, that's the town's financial statement. That really is not, that just tells about the financial condition of the town.
But it does have some school items in it, doesn't it?
Um, but these do, yes.
Are these the same? Is it different?
It's true for each of us, right?
Oh, I see. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, now I got it, okay. Very official, okay.
So, the financial statements don't tell, don't go to auditors' findings and such, it's just a financial statement for the town. These three go into findings of the school and the town. So, the first report that I have, that I gave you, I didn't remember, but it's called the Independent Accountants Report on Applying Adrepan Procedures or Compliments Applicable to Mass School District's End-of-Year Financial Report. That's the end of the report, Nancy, that we were just asking about. And if you look in there, on page three, you'll see the findings. There are four findings, which once were up to my attention, were amended and corrected. So, really, everything that they found that was of slight error, such as being corrected. The second report-
If I could just stop you for one moment. My experience from another board of schools tended to have the following as a committee-wide or board-wide report, that we would get this, we would also get a synopsis of your feedback to them, your comments, and then the action taken.
Yes.
So, I think that, you know, and I'm not, you're saying it verbally, which is great, but I think in the future, you know, it'd be nice to have those, so that when we get the reports, we then also have the responses by the management, you know, as to what, you know, what you've done, and then the action that was actually taken.
And it's actually in these reports.
Okay.
So, if you look at page three on our first report, for instance, it says finding number one, and then the county firm listed the finding, properly report grant regulations. So, they tell you what the mistake is, and then they, then they give a recommendation. And if you notice some of the first findings, as we understand them, amendment has been filed to correct these issues. So, in this report, there's no responses, because I get a chance to correct the issues before it's-
So, you don't, you don't in writing then respond and say, "We are correcting this"? You don't, they don't get anything in writing?
On the next two, they, you'll see that.
They do. Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Okay. All right, so that's the first report.
And that's, let me just, so I get it straight, and that's because of the nature of it, it's something easily capable of being corrected.
They want it corrected before it's turned into the Department of Ed.
Okay.
Because then the Department of Ed takes all of these audits from the whole state-
Right.
-and compiles, it compiles end-of-year information from all of the districts, and has to take, has to submit its Massachusetts end-of-year report to the federal government, so that every, all of the 50 states then have to report it to the federal government.
Good.
So, if they allow, so if we sent our information in, and then after the fact had to make all those corrections, they wouldn't be sending in the information-
I see. So, it's the nature of the report and where it's going, and the context of it, in the federal scheme.
Exactly.
Great, wonderful.
And then on the second report, you will see that report, I did label it number two, it's called the Independent Auditor's Report Pursuant to Governmental Auditing Standards in Civil Audit Act amendments of 1996. And that report is, that's a report that the auditors do, and they audit the town and the school at the same time, and they're looking mostly, well, the letter will explain what it's looking for, but they have to audit federal money that comes into the town or to the schools. And so, if you look through this report, you'll see a few issues that pertain to town findings and some that pertain to school findings. And there were, on page 12, you'll see what's labeled, up towards the bottom of the page, it's labeled finding number 2015-003. So, that pertains to the school, and what they were looking for there was anybody who works in a program that's funded by the federal money, which is the school lunch program, and some of the kind one and special ed grants. All of those employees have to sign a time and effort certification that says, "I only got paid for work that I did on such and such a grant or school lunch program, so all of you, the federal dollars, went to my salary and all of my time was focused on that school or federal project." So, that's what they were looking for. And again, these auditing reports were for the previous fiscal year, for which I was not here, so some things, you know, I came at totally end of May, Charlie left in March, I came in May, so it's a matter of not really knowing where, you know, where one left off and one picked off. Some things, you know, may have been, yes, that's not going to happen longer. And then if you look up page 14, you'll see that there are two findings that relate to 2014 grants. And again, those issues have been resolved. So, again, you know, we'll just, whatever the auditors find, you know, because of the turnover from Charlie to myself, you know, I'm trying to make everything in the district stable now. So, I see where the auditors are coming from, what they're looking for, although I do have experience with this from previous years, I'm able to just target them on what the issues are and resolve them and not keep them continuing. And then the third report is called the Independent Accountants Report on Applying Adrepan Procedures and Compounds at the Mass Department of Ed, Adrepan Procedures and Audit Guidelines for Student Activity Funds. And the student activity funds have to be audited every three years, and so last year we had the auditors audit the high school student activity account, which is our largest account. There were a number of filings, and on this report, often you will see the school's response. You'll see the finding, the recommendation by the auditors, and the school's response.
Well, let me ask you that. So, let's start with one, for example. It says, "require annual school committee approval of all student activity accounts." So, when will that happen?
This year.
No, but I mean, what month?
September, so starting beginning of the year.
Yeah, probably the beginning of the year, once the stars, we know which activities-
So, we would, we would expect to have an itemized activity list, what's in it, what has been in it, you know, what has been carried over? There was some question about some of the various classes not carrying their monies over.
Exactly.
They were pretty detailed on what they-
My senior class.
Yeah, they were.
Yes.
I mean, I understand it's a lot of work, okay, but we have to do it, and-
Absolutely. Trish has already been leading the principals on that.
Okay.
We've got Mary Ann and-
Mary Ann and Pat Chisholm.
See, from our point of perspective, it would be great to track, see all the accounts, when we're going to do the quarterly reviews, or you're going to do the quarterly reviews, or how we're overseeing it. We probably want to do it on a quarterly basis, just to oversee it a little bit, to make sure it's going smoothly, and then hopefully it gets into a predictable path.
Exactly, exactly.
But even the field trips, I mean, were very detailed on what they're expecting, you know, item for item, where the money went and where it's going.
Right. So, this summer, I'm also working, in addition to recordbooking, and I'm also working on the student activity accounts, because we've got to put new procedures in place, update our procedures, label, et cetera. I'm going to come out with some standard forms for all three of the principals to use, so that we're all using the same forms, because next year we'll all be in the same building. So, again, you know, it would make more sense for everyone to see the same paperwork.
And Jorge probably should have some kind of a software or something to track this, or create that.
She is a little doctor.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We'll do some.
A little doctor.
Some way to, some way to get it online.
Yeah.
Good. Well, does anyone else have a question on, on any of these items I've picked out one?
As far as policies, is there anything that you're aware of within the school committee policies that needs to be looked at that relates to this? I mean, I'll look at that, I will look through the policies, but-
Yeah. I hadn't gotten that far yet.
Yeah.
I don't think any policies need to be changed, I think that the policies are there, we just need to adhere to them.
Okay. And have procedures that match the policy.
Exactly.
Well, we're going to keep our eye on it, I know you're going to keep your eye on it, so let's tickle this in for the September meeting, and we have that in place, and we'll look forward to our first crack at it.
Yes. And then I have one other item, those three lunch prices.
Yes.
Oh, right.
Is that an action item?
Well, I'd like it to be, but you need, we need time to think about it.
Well, no, why don't we, why don't we get to that when we hit the action items, so does that stuff?
Oh, okay.
Unless you want to give an overview of it.
It's a piece of the policies or the regulations that I think it relates to.
Yes, actually, one of the audits, it was the second audit, and that I gave you, and yeah, on page, so. Uh, okay. So on the second half auditor's packet that I gave you, on the very last page, the second paragraph, the second bloated paragraph down, talks about the school lunch program and the meal price equity system that's in place. So the USDA actually, um, comes out with an amount that paid meals should cost. Um, because that's the re, that's the amount of reimbursement that the federal government gives us. So they said, well, if we're, if we're going to give you a certain amount of dollars for free meals, you have to at least be charging people who aren't paying the same amount of money. That's a fair equity pricing.
Mm-hmm.
And so if you notice on this last page in the audit report, um, I'll just tell you briefly. It says that in fiscal year two thousand fifteen, the school's weighted average paid meal price was two forty-four, which is less than the federal free meal reimbursement of two sixty-five. Consequently, the school did not comply with this requirement. The school is required to either increase the paid meal charge, or we have to take it out of our local appropriation and make up the difference. If it's, we're charging ten cents too little, then we are.
So are the ones in green the ones that you're suggesting that we increase?
That's my suggestion. Um, so for instance, if you look at that memo page that I gave you.
Yeah.
Yes.
With the prices on it, it shows the history for the last few years of what the breakfast and the lunch programs cost. We don't necessarily have a problem with the breakfast prices, but it's the lunches. I wanted, I could only go back as far as two thousand thirteen, fourteen, to see that the USDA average was two fifty-nine for the lunch. At the JFK and the South, we only charged two thirty-five, but at the high school, we charged two sixty. So the high school was compliant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the following year, the USDA average, USDA average was two sixty-five. Again, the high school was compliant, the JFK and the South were behind. This past fiscal year, the USDA average was two seventy. So both, um, all three schools were not in compliance. And this coming school year, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, the USDA average says that it should be two seventy-eight for lunch. So if you look, the JFK and the South are very far behind, they're actually twenty-eight cents behind.
Mm-hmm.
Now, there's an adult category where adults can buy lunches?
Uh, yes. That has nothing to do with the price equity formula that the state looks at.
But you're recommending that we increase it?
Well, I, um, I'm showing you, for instance, if you look at the adults, right now we charge three fifty for an adult, but we don't make them pay the sales tax on top of that. So the sales tax is built in. So really, even though an adult is paying three fifty for a lunch, they're paying three twenty-nine for the lunch. And twenty-one cents of that goes to the state for the meal tax. So they're also paying three twenty-nine for lunch. It's just my thoughts compared to other districts in the South Shore.
All right. We'll take that up on the action items now that we've had it explained. Why don't we go through the rest of the agenda and that'll give us a little time to think about it while we're doing that. Um, and that will be, uh, reports. So we've got subcommittee member reports. Would anyone like to make a report?
With regards to the foundation committee, we continue to meet and we're making progress. And, um, glad to have Julie Hamilton onboard committee, helping us.
Thank you, Julie.
Yep. Thank you, Julie.
The, um, the, uh, my sense of this is that we probably won't be making another report until fall, late in the fall. But that, um, the private foundation folks are percolating. So there's something significant, hopefully, in Rumbamba, I would say, something like that. So that's very positive for the town.
Yeah. Looking to provide some sort of foundation to them and, and, and walk away.
Right. Well, it's their, it's their baby, but by the same token, they do need input from the schools. And the, it's, I don't want to rain on their parade, so we'll wait till they're ready in the fall, I think, to kind of.
And I think it's going to be a great vehicle for, you know, people to donate money for, you know, who are interested in supporting the schools financially. It's going to be, we haven't had a vehicle like that. Um, and we have, you know, many years of wonderful alumni who I know would, you know, would love to do that. So.
Well, the little we've heard, and again, I don't want to rain on their parade, but the scope and magnitude of it is going to be commiserate, I think, with the new building. So.
The interest is impressive. I mean, people want to get involved and want to help out. It's very impressive. I'm impressed.
Yeah.
I'm very, I don't usually get excited, but I'm rather excited about this. That's about as exciting as I can get.
It's a lot of work, though, to get to that point. It really is.
The, are there any other reports to be made today?
No. I'll just mention on the regionalization.
Please.
I did send that letter out that I talked about the last meeting. Did you get a copy of it?
I got a copy of it.
Okay. So, you know, we just, basically the letter informed Avon or reiterated, you know, where they could get the information they were seeking. And to, to let us know what direction they're going in and kind of put the ball in their court. And as far as I know, we haven't heard back, but that did only go out, you know, a couple of weeks ago.
Well, it's a long way to Tipperary, it sounds like.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Interesting. Well, now, uh, let's see. How about any committee members who have reports? Are there any? I don't think there are, probably, today.
No.
Okay. Great. So why don't we next turn to, um, the action items? And we'll start with the, uh, school business manager, Lugo's suggestions of increases. Now, it appears that you're suggesting there be an increase of, at the JFK and South of two seventy-five on lunch?
Yes.
And which reflects, and, and two eighty-five at the high school on lunch. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then for adults, you're suggesting, why are there two prices?
I think it's a either or.
Yeah. He, well, if we charge three seventy-five, then they're really paying three fifty for the meal and twenty-two cents for sales tax. If we charge four dollars, it's three seventy-five for the meal and twenty-three cents.
Well, I personally think four dollars is a cheap lunch. And I mean, I don't know, I would go with that figure. I don't see that an adult is going to be deprived by paying four dollars for lunch. I, you know.
What about the kids, though? You have a choice of two seventy to two seventy-five. Do you really want to go from two fifty to two seventy-five? Or do you want to?
Where are the kids?
It's above that. JFK and South, it says.
I don't think that's a choice. I think that one is the high school and one is the.
No, there are two.
Oh, there are two?
Yes.
You just put a range.
Yeah. So you did the two seventy, so it's not a big.
Right. Right. No, I don't have a problem with the children. I think the adults will compare.
And that will get you where you need to be, to be in compliance with that.
Two seventy is still low, two seventy-five is still a little low. But a little bit extra on the high school side will offset.
Do you think it will, it's enough to balance it, or do you?
Well, I've talked to a lot of the school manager, that will balance it, but, um, I've talked to a lot of the school business managers around the South Shore. And they were told that they've grown up a quarter the last year or two themselves. So, and then again, it's a matter of the change. You know, kids are coming in, handing over two seventy in cash or two seventy-five.
It's easier than two seventy-five.
It's really your call.
Yeah.
Um, we can work with either, either the person we just said.
So the two seventy-five might be, and then you're in compliance.
So it's a quarter increase, essentially. Lunch is going up twenty-five cents.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's all right. Everything else has gone up.
I think.
Well, would somebody like?
And the high school would be two, are we saying two eighty-five?
Two seventy-eight on the lunch.
No.
No, no, two, two eighty-five, is it?
Well, the higher number was two eighty-five.
And it's, now it's two sixty-five. So that's an increase of twenty cents.
Yeah. So two seventy-five and two eighty-five?
I would go with two eighty-five.
Okay.
Twenty cent increase. I don't think that's a killer.
So I would make a motion that we increase the lunches to two seventy-five for the elementary, two eighty-five for the high school. And four, are we saying four dollars for the adults?
For the adults.
And four dollars for the adults.
Yeah.
And for the students to be in compliance with the USDA average.
Okay. So you've made that sort of comprehensive motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Does that meet with your approval, Dr. Lally?
Either one, if it's, if either one will do, then whatever your pleasure is.
Okay. Great. Um, let me ask some of the principals. Does that seem, does that seem fair?
Yeah.
It does. All right. So we've gotten some input from, uh, the community, scholars, administrators, yeah? Are there any further things to be said? All right. Well, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see. Increases have been made. Uh, well, let's see. Lastly, let's see. A report to dispose of approximately five hundred outdated and poor-conditioned books from the South School Library. That sounds horrible. Would, would you like to talk about that?
It sounds horrible, but it's actually, I think, really good. Um, Christine Golden has been at the South School all summer going through the library, which hasn't been done.
A long time.
A, a, a long time. The findings in the library of books are ripped, yellow pages. They're just in.
Deplorable condition.
Yes. So, and the other great thing is that she's going through these books and she's adding them to the catalog system that is already, you know, here at the high school and at JFK. So for example, she mentioned today that about a hundred of those books are box card children, paperback books. They're deplorable condition. But that set is at the JFK. So now that we have this online catalog system, if kids still want to read the box card children, we can get access to them. They're already in the district. So when we move into one building, they'll already be there. Um, so it's more or less just get a read of those books that are.
So there used to be agencies, I think, thinking of the Sabre Foundation, for an example, where they would take books and give them to Third World countries. Is that something that would be part of this?
I haven't talked to her about that. Um, potentially we could look into.
I mean, I don't like the word discarded. So I mean, I would prefer to see, I think.
If they can be donated.
To see if they can be given to, you know, another nation where they would appreciate the books.
I think we just have to pay for the shipping.
Could that be looked into before we voted? Rather than say discard, it would be.
Maybe Chris Golden's familiar with that.
Yeah. She just, oh, she just cleaned up JFK landmarks and maybe she's already.
All right. So why don't we put this on for August, just to make sure we have.
Why not make it donated or discarded?
Change it.
All right. Donated or discarded. That's fine. Would somebody like to make an amendment to that?
Yeah.
Donated or discarded.
Yeah. Don't, you know, preference to donation.
Preference is donation.
Have to, you know, if you have to discard them because there is no opportunity.
That's fine. Good. Um, someone a second to that?
Second.
All right. Are there any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lastly, we have the, of the action items. We have June twenty-third's school committee minutes. I'm sure we've all had the time to peruse these minutes. Wish I had, so that I could. Let's see. Are these on? Okay. Are there any corrections? Entertained a motion.
Tricia, Tricia, did you take a look at the description of the audit, just to make sure that was accurate as?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Waiting for a motion. Now, once it's.
Motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-third as presented.
Is there a second?
Seven.
All those in favor? That passes. Now we'll go to old business. We talked a little bit about trying to have, set up a meeting to have self-evaluation. I don't know if any of the committee members have thought about that, but I'd like to try to do it if we can, you know, soon. So, um, if you could perhaps email me with some dates that you might think are possible for that to.
So we're talking an evening or a weekend? What are you, what are you thinking?
Well, maybe we can do the, uh.
Evening?
How is that Holbrook Corporate Bank in the summer? Is it hot?
No, it's very nice.
Well, you think that's a place we might be able to?
Absolutely.
Borrow? Okay. So why don't we try to set up some Saturday, um, in the next few weeks?
Sure.
And, um, could you perhaps give us some, get some dates for us when that might be available? And we'll circulate them through our recording secretary to all the members. And hopefully we can have a little meeting on self-evaluation.
Sure.
Uh, is there any other old business? Is there any new business? I have one item on the new business, which is I saw this notice of a public hearing from the planning board. I don't know if you saw this outside.
No.
But it said, notices hereby given that the Holbrook Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, at seven P.M. in the Town Hall, first floor, meeting room. The applicant Granite Street Realty Corp. Its project is to raise one seventy-seven dash one seventy-nine and one eighty-one South Franklin Street. And construct a new multi-use building consisting of nineteen residential condos and approximately twenty-four hundred square feet of retail space. And documentation in support of this proposal is available for public inspection in the town clerk's office. So we might want to take a look at that, get a sense of what the retail businesses are. And hopefully they're compatible.
How many condos is it?
It's nineteen.
Yeah. Yeah.